Weatherly Borough Council Regular Meeting for July 28, 2025 will now come to order. Before roll call, I would like to introduce and welcome our newest member to council, Mr. Greg Walters. Greg was appointed. Greg was appointed at our special meeting and he will be filling his seat until the end of the year. Roll call.
Michael Blizia?
Here.
Vincent Cutterford? Joseph Seibert?
Here.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Here.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Greg Walters?
Here.
And Norman Ritchie?
Here.
Okay, next invitation and pledge of allegiance. Teresa.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, we are asking for your blessings and guidance throughout this meeting and that we may honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and little with an open heart. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 23rd. Okay, there is a correction. I had made a mistake on the last meeting. I had the wrong meeting. Then I said, what's the name, please?
Jim Dammannenhauer.
Jim Dammannenhauer was here, but he wasn't. And that was my fault. That's the only correction that we have.
And the question you had.
And the question I had.
The transfer.
About the transfer of $100,000. So we'll need an approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the regular meeting, June 23rd, 2025.
I'll second it.
Whoever.
Okay, who would like to take it?
Who's second?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Ayes have it. Treasurer's report. Anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Roll call.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Greg Walters?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Next item is approval of the bills. Are there any questions on any of their bills? No questions, we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion. We approve the bills.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second.
Somebody hit the light. Somebody hit the light switch.
Roll call.
Did the other switch the call? No.
No.
There you go.
We're good.
Roll call.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Next item. Any items that could serve from council? Any items that could serve from the public? Okay, we'll start our business. First item on business is present proclamation to the Weatherly Ten U Lady Wreckers All-Stars. I'd like to congratulate these young women. They are a great asset to this borough. They put the borough back on the map. They should be proud of themselves. They are in the top eight in the state of Pennsylvania. I think that's outstanding. They need a great round of applause.
You're famous, huh?
Not gonna be. They are. Give them another year, they'll be state.
Okay, we have proclamations for each of the players and each of the coaches. I'm just gonna read one because they're basically all the same. Okay, the Weatherly, the Borough of Weatherly proclamation to the recognition of the Lady Wreckers Eight to Ten Year Old All-Stars, July 28, 2025. Whereas the Weatherly Eight to Ten Year Old All-Stars won Pennsylvania's Section Six Championship, and whereas each Lady Wrecker will carry with them the experience as a life lesson for their entire life. And whereas the Weatherly Borough Council acknowledges and admires the excellence and outstanding performance of this one's from Audrey Weiger, has demonstrated as a player on this team, and now therefore to be resolved by Norman Ritchie, the mayor of Weatherly, Pennsylvania, does hereby acknowledge that the Lady Wrecker Eight to Ten Year Old All-Stars are champions of the Section Six. The young ladies demonstrated teamwork, dedication, and resilience. This is ingredients for continued championships throughout their lives. And witnesses therefore this 28th day of July of the year of our award, 2025. Okay. Congratulations. Next one, Audrey Plaid. Plaid. Next one, Jenna Jones. Grant Greger. Ryan Doran. Mia. Sarver Scurus. Ryan Blackwell. Cora Brown. Tensy Plaidia. Cora Gilbert. Tezabella Duro. Cassidy Whitner. Assistant Coach, Kayla Duro. Assistant Coach, Autumn Gilbert. And Manager Rachel Whitner. Okay, that's it.
Now, you can give certificates.
Okay, we gave everybody a certificate for $5 for the park's sale. You have to spend $5 all at once.
So feed your family, your friends.
Get you ice creams?
Or your coaches.
Girls, what do you say?
Thank you!
You're welcome.
Hey, I just want to add one thing. I was down in Lori, Queens the other day. We were talking about how well they did. She showed me all kinds of pictures. And what we decided to do is I talked to the group, we are gonna, we have a program. If you six hundred and fifty programs, we're gonna put pictures in an article, so you'll get two pages in there. So some of you have to get in touch with me and we'll send everything down to our printer. But you guys will be all over because the drivers take them, I'll take them home to Calif, that's Carolinas, wherever. So this is a real big deal and everybody sitting here and everybody in Weatherly is very proud of you. Keep it up.
Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Bye now.
Yeah, I know. I know, I'm sure it's small.
Yes, very small. Very small.
Tiny.
Okay. Okay, next order of business is the change in garbage collection company.
We, I thought everybody comes in. We just want to make you aware that Tamaka Transfer had been bought by another company. And we have a two-year contract, two years remaining on their contract. Nothing will change in our contract. Everything remains the same for the two years. You may see Casella Trucks in town or the Tamaka Transfer Trucks, but just so you're aware, when you see a different truck in town, that's what had happened.
You need a motion to approve, approve the consent.
Okay, we need a.
We need a motion.
You do, yes. They said, under our contract with Tamaka Transfer, we have, they can't do this unless we consent. So every municipality, they've contacted and we, and we have the consent, Harold, but it's consenting to the transfer. So you need a motion and second and a vote on that consent.
Okay, we need a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we agree on the environmental awareness court, Pennsylvania Corporation, Salsa Mid-Atlantic LLC, take over the services here until the end of the contract. Contract runs from 2023 to 2027.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Ayes have it. Next order of business is a motion to rescind the LOA Letter of Interest to the DCED.
There are different programs in, in the DCED. And the ones that we're primarily looking at right now do not require a letter of interest. So we're just looking that, they approved that last time, we'll rescind it this time. And if anything comes up in the future that you need it, we can just redo it.
I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion because I, when, and again, that LOI, when it was first explained to me, I pushed to have it accepted because we thought that there were, there were things that we were gonna pursue so we didn't have to wait for a whole other meeting. So I apologize for wasting time, but as it was presented to me, we should have had it in place. So I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the LOI.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Next order of business is to open and award bids for Raina Park DC NR grant project, which includes earthwork, paving, and fencing.
With the contracts here. Contract three. This one doesn't say. This one says fencing company. I know. Okay, so we don't have any further notes to that.
No. We only received two bids and those two bids were under the fencing category.
Okay, the first, the first bid is from Rukowski Fencing Incorporated. They're from Sawyersville. Again, that bid is $113,840. Was there a bit bond?
Yes.
I didn't see it. It just says the bid form.
That might be a problem.
It's a power of attorney.
Yeah, but it's. Bid bond.
A bid bond. And they do have a bid bond. They really have it stuffed in there. They have, they have the whole thing taped and everything. Let's hope.
Just rip it off.
I'm gonna, I don't have a choice. It's packed in there. This is a book.
It's bigger than the spec.
Minichi? Is that Minichi?
Yes.
Minichi Incorporated is the second bidder. If you need me to spell that, that's M-I-N-I-C-H-I. And there is a bid bond. Okay, Minichi, I'm thinking that's how you pronounce it, Minichi, is $86,000.
What?
They're from Dupont.
Whatever, what did you put in the specs? Yeah, so yeah, usually it's in the spec somewhere that you put it. You open them now, you have at least, usually you have at least four or five of those. Yes, who did table?
I'll table them.
Harold, what about the other two contracts? You want to re-bid them?
Yes.
Okay, I'm still there. I'll say this.
So we have the two bids. There are no bids on the excavating and there are no bids on the paving. And we have the two bids on the fencing, which I would highly recommend that you table at this time and authorize us to go out and bid again.
To the two, earthwork and paving?
Correct.
Because the project was broken up, could you quickly discuss the scope of the fencing portion of it? What did that actually mean and what did that entail?
The fencing portion included the encompassment of the pickleball courts and the basketball courts. That was it. You have one 12-foot gate and you also have three man gates in it.
And can that work even be completed before the other work is done?
No. But what we're saying is, is table this one right now because we either have 40 to, 45 to 60 days to accept it.
Okay.
That we pull in some other bids to do the other work. We have a fencing bid.
Were there any packets taken for the other portions of the?
Yes, we gave out approximately, what, six packets under each contract?
Hold on.
That we solicited, you know, also, you know, that we contacted paving companies and paving companies that we have worked with. You have to understand something that because of the, this is a federal grant to DCNR, so we're working with federal money. So Davis Bacon Act comes into play. Anything over $2,000 in grant money has to be, has to be bidded and it's prevailing wage, which a lot of small contractors don't even want to touch prevailing wage because the paperwork involved with it is really arduous. You know, it's just not something easy to deal with. And, and what we're seeing here is that, and again, we contacted and sent out packages to at least six under each of the categories. Either they're too busy or they just don't want to deal with prevailing wage at this time. But this is our third, third round to get this done. First round, nobody bid on the whole package, all three. Second time, came in twice the amount or the grand amount. This is the third time and they only got bids on fencing. Means your excavation people and your paving people, they're either too busy or don't want to be, you know, be bothered with it. It's not a small project and it's not an extremely large one either, but it would be, I would think, just on the paving aspect, would be pretty much equal to or just a little bit less than what we did on Second Street. So we're gonna go out and bid again. We have till the end of the year and I'm not gonna give up on this. We're gonna keep putting that out. So we'll contact our engineers tomorrow morning and we'll draw up the new, you know, timetable and specs for bidding and send it out again.
For the specs?
Or, huh?
If they authorize us to.
Right.
And the specs will be the same though?
Specs will be the same. The only difference will be the timetable.
Right.
Right. And if the, we're asking council also, if the bids come in, that we can open them earlier than a council meeting by more, you know, a week or more, we'd like to do that in award because we are running on a very tight schedule here, you know, to get this done.
So you're saying if nothing happens, you're sure we just lose this one?
It's unfortunately what happened, from what DCNR tells us, it's federal money and federal money just ends. There's no extension, there's nothing on it. Now, just also, I want you to bear in mind that this was a three-year grant. When we started this grant, we had gone in and I had said to our grant representative, I want to start the first year. And they told us, there's no way you're starting the first year because there's, you're gonna be doing paperwork for a year and a half to two years. And that's what we were doing. We were doing paperwork for almost two years before we were able to put this out to bid. I mean, we had an enormous amount of paperwork that had to be done to, to just move forward on this. But we're not gonna quit. We're gonna keep going.
Is there anything else you can apply for that one? Rather than a pickleball court?
Well, right.
I don't see one, one gate's elusive and one nobody ever touches.
Well, let's.
But is there, is there a volleyball court? People seem to use the volleyball court.
Well, we can't on this one. When this one's gone, yeah, well, when this is.
Go over and reapply for a different grant?
Yes, that's exactly right. And we're definitely gonna find one that is not federally funded. Because it just, it just puts too many hoops for us to jump through.
The prevailing wage, that's what kills.
Well, prevailing wage doesn't matter. If, on a, if it were just state money, anything over 25,000 is prevailing wage. So we're stuck there, but federal is Davis Bacon, so. But yeah, we'll just reapply. But we need a.
Were we all able to do the work on its own?
Well, we, we might look at that aspect in one, one part of it, you know?
Would we hit reimbursing? Had it at one of your notes?
Well.
If we had started, there would certainly have worked.
If you're buying material and everything else, yes. Labor-wise, I doubt very seriously that they're gonna reimburse us. But yeah, there's a way of looking at it that we could do it on our own and we're certainly gonna give that a hard look. Because that would only come under the excavation aspect. I mean, I can't do the paving, you know?
That's why I had, I was sure it wouldn't give the, for all the, the department and everything. You can never.
Right now, with the timetable it is, we're gonna look at every aspect. One way or another, I don't want to lose a quarter of a million dollars. But we need a motion.
To rebid. Rebid, earthwork, then paving.
And table this.
And table this. Yeah. Could you do that in one fell swoop or what can you do separately? You can do it in one fell swoop if you're articulate. I would like to table the bids for now and resubmit quotes out, resend quotes out for all the other phases of the project. Is that right? We understood.
Yeah, we'll do another one.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, the next motion I would ask is that you allow us, should the bids come in prior to a council meeting, that we were allowed to open them and award and then have your approval at the council meeting, you know, that you approve. We'll send them down to Jim for him to validate, you know, that the low bid.
Yeah, I.
Just to accelerate this, even if we can gain a week, it means a lot right now.
Somebody else want to do this one?
it would be, I would think, just on the paving aspect, would be pretty much equal to, or just a little bit less than what we did on Second Street. So we're gonna go out and bid again. We have till the end of the year and I'm not gonna give up on this. We're gonna keep putting that out. So we'll contact our engineers tomorrow morning and we'll draw up the new, you know, timetable and specs for bidding and send it out again.
For the specs?
If they authorize us to open this.
Right.
And the specs will be the same, though?
Specs will be the same. The only difference will be the timetable.
Right.
Right. And if the, we're asking council also, if the bids come in that we can open them earlier than a council meeting by more, you know, a week or more. Uh, we'd like to do that in award because we are running on a very tight schedule here, you know, to get this done.
So you're saying if nothing happens, you're sure we just lose this money?
It's unfortunately what happened, from what DCNR tells us, it's federal money and federal money just ends. There's no extension, there's nothing on it. Now, just also, I want you to bear in mind that this was a three-year grant. When we started this grant, we had gone in and I had said to our grant representative, I want to start the first year. And they told us, there's no way you're starting the first year because there's, you're gonna be doing paperwork for a year and a half to two years. And that's what we were doing. We were doing paperwork for almost two years before we were able to put this out to bid. I mean, we had an enormous amount of paperwork that had to be done to, to just move forward on this. But we're not gonna quit. We're gonna keep going.
Is there anything else you can apply for that for? Rather than a pickleball court?
Well, right-
I don't see one that's losing it and one nobody ever touches.
Well, let's-
But is there, is there a volleyball court? People seem to use the volleyball court.
Well, we can't on this one. When this one's gone, yeah, well, when this is-
Go over and reapply for a different grant?
Yes, that's exactly right. And we're definitely gonna find one that is not federally funded. Because it just, it just puts too many hoops for us to jump through.
The prevailing wage, that's what kills us.
Well, prevailing wage doesn't matter. If, on a, if it were just state money, anything over twenty-five thousand is prevailing wage. So we're stuck there, but federal is Davis Bacon, so. But yeah, we'll just reapply. But we need a-
Are we all able to do the work on its own without?
Well, we, we might look at that aspect in one, one part of it, you know?
Would we hit reimbursing? Had it at one or your number?
Well-
If we had to start it, there would certainly have work.
If we're buying material and everything else, yes. Labor-wise, I doubt very seriously that they're gonna reimburse us. But yeah, there's a way of looking at it that we could do it on our own and we're certainly gonna give that a hard look. Because that would only come under the excavation aspect. I mean, I can't do the paving, you know?
That's why I had, I was sure it wasn't give the, for all the, the department and everything, you can then look at this.
Right now, with the timetable it is, we're gonna look at every aspect. One way or another, I don't want to lose a quarter of a million dollars. But we need a motion-
To rebid, rebid, earthwork then paving.
And table this.
And table this, yeah. Could you do that in one fell swoop or what can you separate? You can do it in one fell swoop, if you're articulate. I would like to table the bids for now and resubmit quotes out, resend quotes out for all the other phases of the project. Did I say that right? We understood.
We'll do another one.
Here, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, the next motion I would ask is that you allow us, should the bids come in prior to a council meeting, that we were allowed to open them and award and then have your approval at the council meeting, you know, that you approve. We'll send them down to Jim for him to validate, you know, that the low bid.
Yeah, I, I-
Just to accelerate this. Even if we can gain a week, it means a lot right now.
Somebody else want to do this one?
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We, uh, we give the borough manager permission to, uh, to use his judgment and, uh, send everything down to Jim, uh, if it happens before our next meeting.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, the next item of business, which street has been published and ready for a vote?
I guess we'll bring it up for a vote?
Yep.
I, uh, I'll make a motion if, uh, we go through it, uh, making it one way, from High Street to West Main Street.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Your names.
Effective in five days.
Are we gonna have a grace period or anything?
Sergeant?
What's that? It's right here.
Uh, grace period on one way?
Switch it over, like, put your, right, right. You mean for certain people?
Correct, yes.
I mean, I would say no. I mean, we've been battling this back and forth. It's been, you know, within the off-season, it goes so one way, so it's posted, it's posted.
Okay.
I don't pay the traffic laws the way they are.
Okay.
Okay, the next item of business, discussion and resolution on fishing at the park. Sure everybody read the narrative of what has been brought up so far? Uh, one rod, charge ten dollars, allow two fish. If you have a second rod for the same person, it'd be an additional five dollars and an additional two fish. Rental for fishing reel and rod with barber and hooks, rented for twenty dollars per day. And we're planning on opening, looking to start for three days a week, probably Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
An eight-hour day.
Eight-hour days. Does anybody have any comments on this?
Did you say Thursday, Friday and Saturday?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What would be the approximate hour?
We're just saying an eight-hour day, probably from eight AM. Until four.
Or are you looking at kicking this off?
As soon as I can get the, the shut down there and wired up and everything else, within the next, it'd be in the middle of August somewhere.
We've been kicking this around for a long time, so I think we should go and get it act.
Anybody else have any comments?
That'll be managed by the Park Stand people for the time being or will that be?
No, we're gonna have to hire people for this. So anybody wants to work the fishing thing, come see us.
I have a question. Will you require an official license by the state still?
No.
Or then is there private?
No, this is private.
Okay, if there's no other comments, you have a motion?
I have one more comment before we do that. I would like to at least be notified. We, we know this is, um, we know this is a new venture. Town hasn't operated this before. Uh, like we discussed in previous meetings, the rules will be, they'll have to be fluid because we're, there, things are gonna come up here on a regular basis. But I would like to at least be notified or I'd like, uh, report, if at all possible, at the meetings to, as our profit and loss, on, on what's happening here as far as, you know, employees and, and, you know, if there's any situations we need to address.
Oh, absolutely. Like you said, it is a new venture, so it's gonna have a lot.
The time, eight to four.
Well, I'm, I'm just throwing that out.
Saying the kids are gonna be going back to school, so maybe like twelve to eight. That way the kids could go after school.
We can change, you know, to whatever we want, you know, it's not, doesn't have to be set here. Uh, I'm, I'm just throwing that out for the summer, you know, and it's, comes down to the winter, you know, and winter is fall. Um, you know, we can change, adapt it, you know?
They don't give one unless you're willing to, I think, give ones to the boss.
Yeah, we are.
We can at least keep a book there, right, with ideas or suggestions, right?
Right.
That if somebody wants to write down, you know, these are the times we would like, because if there is anybody, if anybody's actually using it, we should accommodate them and what their needs are, I would, I would imagine.
We can do extend the hours if this works.
Yeah.
You can't jump in.
And, you know, the rates could change too. We just, right now, we want to see if there's an interest at all.
Well, here, here's a good question. How much you'd be paying to have people man the stand versus how much you'd be working on?
Well, we don't know how many people are coming in. It won't take, it won't-
I know this is a new thing.
Right.
What's your ballpark and you think you want to hire someone to man the stand?
Right. It's a trial. May only-
We don't have to answer.
It may only go a month, you know?
It may only go a week.
You know?
Any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion if we move forward with this, uh, with the assumption that as we move along, if changes are needed, we'll make them.
Here, we have a motion by Councilman Seibert. Ricky, a second.
I'll second it.
Here, we have a second by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Next order of business, resolution for the Hudsondale Street project.
This is in regards to the PennDOT project that's gonna be taking place next year. Uh, we've been doing a lot of preliminary work with PennDOT at this time. And in order for us to be reimbursed, uh, for a portion of our, our materials and labor, uh, we have to do this resolution to be part of the, the project. Initially, there was to be a seventy-five percent reimbursement, uh, from PennDOT. Uh, but the highest cost share they can do right now is fifty percent. And then we have two poles that are on private, uh, in a private right-of-way, and we believe that to be the Norfolk Southern property. And this will be prorated, which will bring our, uh, potential reimbursement up to sixty-four point three percent on the work. Uh, the seventy-five is, offer is, uh, no longer available because, uh, they, the contractor had received the notice to proceed already issued. So this, should not only affect us, but any other utility on the poles.
Is this cost that we are going to incur?
Yes.
Okay.
This is our cost.
I understand that part. We just, we had this in another municipality recently where we entered into agree with PennDOT with an estimate of one amount. When they bid it, it came back like five times that amount.
Bid amount?
They bid, they bid the project. PennDOT bid their project and-
Oh.
The borough got stuck paying instead of two hundred thousand, I think it's four hundred seventy thousand.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what they're gonna reimburse us for us moving our poles temporarily and then putting the poles back-
Okay.
Permanently.
Right.
I was in their office the day they got a phone, an hour and a half, and it was on speakerphone, I'll tell you what. I walked out of there, I was confused. I don't know, it was just amazing. I mean, I give, I give these a lot of credit because just sitting there, like, things went back and forth and stuff that was already discussed, that was supposed to be ready to move forward, like, he's had to start from scratch again. And it was, it was really quite confusing.
PennDOT seems to make projects more intensified than what they, they need to be.
Harold, what about the other utilities in the street? Cause I know there's a fire hydrant right there by the edge.
Right, and that's, that's part of our work, that we're gonna have to remove that. I already spoke to the fire department about moving their, their dry hydrant, you know, out of there. They're gonna move it themselves. They don't want PennDOT touching it. Uh, but yes, we, that hydrant that's there is gonna have to be removed, so we'll be working on that. Plus, what they're also mentioning is not only the utility poles and the lines and everything going temporary and then coming back permanently. Uh, also, they're gonna be doing paving in there, so, uh, they were even talking about our risers, you know, for our manholes and our water valves, you know, along there that, you know, we would supply, you know, for them to do the work. We didn't want to have them do any of our work. So we already have the easements we need for our temporary move. It's just a matter of going through all the steps with PennDOT, how they want it, how it has to proceed through their software program.
Could I ask who dumped the rock there?
They did.
They did, okay.
Yep, yep, to, to secure the wall.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and on another note on that, I just, and thank you for being here. I'm not trying to yell at you because you're here, but, um, they didn't even know what was happening. It was only me stopping, asking a question and Joe stopping. They, the borough's not even made aware that the state does these things. They just come in and they, we're moving lines and doing whatever they want, willy-nilly, just running around like crazy and nobody knows what's happening. And, and just like this, and, and for the, the Facebook crowd, stuff like this is, it's the most frustrating part of this job. Here it is, moving targets, seventy-five percent, no wait, no fifty, no thirty, no stop, no here, wait, this, this, this road was gonna be done two years ago. Dear God, don't say nothing out in town, because here it is, now it's planned on next year, and if I had to bet a million dollars, something else is gonna screw it up for next year. And people do the best they can, but it, it's a never-ending battle of, of shifting, changing, different numbers, different prices, like, how, how would you run a household if, if you went to the grocery store every week and, and everybody just went in and repriced everything? Some up, some down, whatever, like, and that's, but, but here, it's, 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 it's a hundred thousand dollar problem. It's not six dollars on eggs. It's, it's, it's just, it's unbelievably frustrating. I'm sorry, I, I guess I crossed a little frustrating, but you, you do things, you, you make decisions, you, you plan stuff out and, and somebody else comes in and messes it all up. And then you're held responsible. People are throwing ropes over oak branches, like, count, no, it's-
Richie and Harold brought that up at the meeting too, that he said several times, I've asked you to let us know when you're coming into town. And he goes, you seem to have a problem with that. And then he goes, it's our town, but your roads, but it doesn't knock the bell off for no one.
Those, those rocks, that whole thing was just decided that weekend. So they, they moved their equipment in there, the contractor came in on Monday. And the state inspector that was down there doing, cause I talked with him, said, what the heck did you say? And he just found out, he's from Tamakiwa, but he's out of the Allen Town office. And he just had found out at seven-thirty that morning before he left his house that he was coming up here. They didn't even know about it.
No, we had no clue what was going on.
And I think some of that was with the flooding that, that happened in Texas. I think somebody started saying, hey, we better go up here and try to do something. That's, stuff happens.
Yeah, and even for all the barricades that were put up and everything else, we never knew that was happening. Next thing I know, I get a phone call from the sergeant, it was you, right? They called me and said, hey, they're putting these barricades up and everything else. They never notified us. We're-
The state's estate, he can't deny that.
Yeah. But in any case, we'll, we'll move forward on this project and get her done.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion for the resolution.
I'll make a motion. We, uh, do the resolution for Hudsondale Street project.
Here, you need a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. Next item of business, authorization for managers to bid and award the nine hundred foot for the trailhead, for the, uh, trail project.
Yeah, what we're asking here is the, the first nine hundred foot going from the trailhead down to the first bridge crossing. Uh, we want to move as quickly as we can on this, as that grant is also running out by October. So if we can get any of the work done, we'd like to get that done under this grant. Um, and again, we're authorizing, coun, uh, asking council to authorize us to go ahead, go out to bid. Uh, when the bids come in, we can award with Jim's, uh, oversight and, uh, move forward with this project as quickly as possible.
Anybody have any questions?
When did the borough get the grant? Why are you waiting so late?
No, we're not, well, we're not waiting late. We, we've had the grant and we've had extensions on it. And what happens is, is like with anything else, just like Mike had said, there's all kinds of things, like, we had to get our chapter one oh five permits to put the bridges up. That took almost a year to get. We have NPDS permits that have to be renewed, uh, that can take up anywhere from three to six months. And then if you have any change whatsoever in what was in that NPDS permit, could take another three months.
So you're telling you've been having this grant and you've got two months to pull it?
No, no, we've been using this grant. We've done a lot of work with this grant since then. I mean, you're looking at-
So stuff has already been done?
Yes. What we're looking at is getting this last nine hundred feet done, you know? So we just want to move as quickly as possible on it before winter sets in.
I was asked a question. Who's on the committee for this trail?
There's-
There used to be one and it just dissipated.
Yeah, there was not, there was only, there was only a committee for the feasibility study.
Okay, well, he just asked me, so I didn't, I didn't know there even was anybody. I thought it was the borough doing it.
It is the borough doing it, and there was a committee during the feasibility study that was put together. And then after that, it wasn't really needed. It was needed for the feasibility study.
Okay, we need a motion for, to authorize managers to bid and award the nine hundred foot trailhead project.
I'll make a motion to give them permission to accept the bids on our behalf.
Second? Roll call.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Okay, the next item of business is to accept our police chief letter for retirement. For those who don't know, Chief Mark Kochick, his last day of work was Friday.
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. And we need to accept his retirement resignation. Anybody have any questions?
I just wanna say, he did a little miss job when he was here. He, uh, the police department should be proud. They get tired of hearing little complaints here and there, but we all keep in touch with you guys. And they'll pay, but I think they do a pretty good job. Harold and Tracy try to keep him up with all the, the highest technology and all the, uh, the modern equipment that they-
You have to sign your-
We can get him in that, on the porch, there's a big wire on that. So I haven't seen him yet. I'd like to thank him.
No, no. I'll bring that up.
What's that?
I would like to thank him myself.
Yeah, yeah, he did a nice job.
Yeah, he was here almost thirty years.
He'll be missed. Uh, near chief, our, one or so, just gonna jump right in. He's gonna leave us with a promise.
Thank you for that, Joe. I'll make sure I let him know.
Joe, Joe, we have to decide that. That hasn't been decided.
That hasn't been decided.
Yeah, that hasn't been done yet.
Okay, we're gonna need a motion and a second to, uh, accept police chief Mark Kochick's letter of retirement.
I'm not doing this one. You don't want to let him retire? I just don't want to pull the lever.
I'll make a motion to accept Chief Mark Kochick's letter of retirement.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call.
Joseph Seibert?
Yes.
Teresa DeAndrea?
Yes.
Michael Blizia?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Gregory Walters?
Yes.
And Norman Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, the next thing.
I just wanna make some comments.
Harold wants to make some comments. There's been a lot of rhetoric on, uh, social media about our water. And Harold can explain what's going on. There's nothing wrong with our water.
Yes, sir. We've been picking it up on social media about the blue water in town, and we're aware of it. And what had happened, um, as you know, we have three wells. Well, one is down by the park, well, two is out on West Main Street, and three is on, uh, Wilbur Street down where the, across from the beer barn.
I thought we had four.
No, we only have three. We only have three wells. But in any case, what happened, well, three is down. Uh, it needs some, it needs some maintenance work on it, and we've sent a piece that has to be done out for fabrication, which we should have back soon, so well, three was inoperable for, for quite some time. Uh, well, two, what happened there is the pump finally met its match. It died after decades and decades of work. We had to replace the well pump in that, so that took it down for a couple weeks. So, in well one and well two, what we do to balance out the pH is we add soda ash to it. And being the fact that we could only add it at well one and not at well two, we were only getting really half the dosage that, you know, we could get. We were anticipating that we'd be up sooner than what we were on well two. So subsequently, we wound with, we usually try to keep it around seven, you know, the pH around seven, which is neutral. It drops down anywhere from six point five in that area. Now we should start climbing up. Well, two's been back in service, but you have to understand that the under, uh, how should I say, the under-service water, you know, with the soda ash, is in the system. It's in all the pipes. It's in your pipes. It's in the water tanks. And till we get that all back in neutral, we'll be back, yeah, probably in another week. If, if your water tanks will give you in a case of emergency with rationing, maybe four to five days with rationing of supply. Normal supply, maybe three and a half, four days will go through the both tanks, from what, you know, you use daily. So we have to go through those tanks and then it'll start, you'll see that it'll get back to normal again. That's why the water is blue at this point, and it should be starting to diminish now that we're, we're back on well two adding our, our supply of, of soda ash. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up, and we brought this up to you last year about the PJM increase, and, uh, I, I don't know if you remember, it was a reliability pricing model that goes up in our transmission fees. And what this is, is in the PJM, the PJM holds an auction every year, and what they're auctioning and what they're looking to get is additional generation into the system. The PJM covers thirteen states. Now, when we hit those high temperatures of the high nineties and everything else, everybody's running their air conditioner. It demands more energy to be brought in. And the way the PJM does that is by going out to auction and getting additional generation to kick in during that period. So they hold this auction every year. And it comes, it comes into effect in June of every year, the new, new numbers come in, which you're, you're gonna see in your bill that they're coming in now from the last auction of last year. There's a, there was another auction held going forward for the next year. That was twenty-five percent more than the previous year. And one of the reasons is, is that the generation out there that's capable of doing this is pretty much gone. A lot of the cold fire generation is out of there. Uh, so a lot of these plants just aren't there to bid anymore. So you have a smaller number of generation being able to bid on this, and naturally it brings the numbers up. So what you're looking at, uh, next year is a twenty-five percent higher cost in the auctions than it was before. So this year, you're gonna see it. You'll start seeing it in your bills now. And we had forewarned you, it's not just us, it's everybody in thirteen states. Whether it be PP and L, MedEd, everybody has the same increase. So it's not just the borough. So we, what we have to do is we just have to accommodate this increase, you know, so we can pay our bills. So you're gonna see that coming now in your bills going forward. And you're also gonna see next June, it's gonna be another increase. And that should be coming out in the newspapers soon because we just got word on the auction numbers. So just preparing you, it's not the borough, it's in thirteen states. And if the state government can, or federal government can do something about it, that's, that's up to them. But right now, this is what we're stuck with. So it's not just the borough. And I think that was it, right? Yep. That's all I had to let you know.
Since you got the water, did you want me to bring it in your filter and water so the rest of the people can see what we did?
No, we're having a, what, we, we have a problem on Briar Lane where with-
Are you going to go get the stuff?
No, no. Uh, they've been experiencing some dirty water. And what we did find out, uh, we were trying to blow, blow this off via hydrant. You know, what we do is open up the hydrant and blow the sediment out of it. And it didn't, it hasn't been working at all. And what we did find out that there is another blow-off farther down that may do the trick, that it had been done, you know, used before. And we're just now starting to use that to blow off that system, that section of the water. So right now, we're kind of like in the testing stage. We, we ran, excuse me, we run the water on a blow-off until it runs clear. And then what happens is, anytime we blow a hydrant off or anything like that, we stir up sediment. Excuse me. And what happens is, we have to wait a couple days for that to come down and to see where the level is on how long the water stays clear. Now, we, we blew it off under this new blow-off file that we found farther down the line. And we ran it for two hours and we ran it till it cleared. Now, we're just waiting for a couple days here to see if it clears anymore for them, but we have been told that since using that blow-off previous years, uh, that it does clear it up for a large number of months, you know. So we're in the process of trying to get that, that taken care of, uh, as far as, you know, using the, the new blow-off or old-new blow-off, uh, to clear your situation up. And I have, I, uh, the young lady over here, Ruthie, uh, to be in contact with us, you know, like every other day, to let me know how her water is. You know, whether it's showing progress or clearing or not. If we don't see any significant progress in the next day or two, we're gonna blow it off again and, and see what we can do to get it, you know, clear.
Yeah, I just, I just changed it in today.
Okay.
And from when I saw you till some change it is. And he says he's gonna go back tomorrow because he doesn't pick us in.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I mean, when we have a situation, there's nothing to hide, you know, and we're, we're trying to rectify it, and it's, we're just gonna, like you said, we'll blow it off more because it hadn't been blown off in a long time, and, uh, we're just gonna keep going after it until we can get that clear.
To the blow-off on Briar Lane wasn't there.
Yeah, right. Our blueprints had indicated there was another blow-off at the end of Briar Lane, but we searched all over, there wasn't any there. It's farther down, uh, Waterburn that we had found it, and that's hopefully gonna make the difference for you. From what I am told from previous operators, that it should make the, the main difference. It's just that it sat for too long. We have to blow it off more.
I know you are.
Yeah. But we have, you know, uh, you constantly in contact with us. We wanna hear from her that it is clearing up or not. That's the only way we can judge whether to keep going with it, so. That's all I had to bring up to Dan.
Do you have an estimated cost for that nine hundred feet to connect the rest of Trail stuff? Do you have something that, an estimated?
I, nothing that I wanna say. I'm putting it out to bid.
But if it comes in astronomical, you're gonna-
I, first of all, I-
I know you wanna get it done, but I mean-
No, no, I can't, I don't wanna say what my estimate is.
Well, but you can answer your second question. If it comes in well over what the grant is, you're not doing the project.
Oh, it will not go over our grand amount. There is absolutely no way.
That's what I'm getting at.
Carol, don't say absolutely no way.
Well, if it costs one point seven million dollars to do nine hundred feet, there's a problem. You just saw him tonight with these prices.
Okay, we're gonna go into the executive session. Need a motion and go into it?
I'll make a motion. We go into the executive.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.